All right, there's a few sections showing all of these portions of the building. So we're looking at the main house here. There's a rear terrace now and then the hillside actually comes down much more steeper than we're showing here. The hillside basically drops right off at the back of that brick wall. This is all existing. This is the proposed courtyard in the front. This would be the gate to the driveway. This is a small brick wall that sort of encases the stairs on either side with trees on both sides so that you can walk right up to the heads in the pool area. This elevation, sorry, is looking along here. This is basically a section through, so you're getting a section through the front of the house. You're cutting through the courtyard, you're cutting through the stairs, and you're cutting through the pool itself. And then this is basically the opposite elevation from here. So you're looking down this way. I'm looking at the main house, the courtyard, the stairs, and then the hedging. And you can see the little portion of the pavilion that you would see beyond the pool hedging. These elevations are looking along here. So again, you're getting the pavilion, you're getting the hedge, courtyard, you're getting a few steps down, and it's about, I think, just a trajectory there. This is a section, basically same perspective, but just cut through the pool itself, so you're cutting through the pavilion, through the pool, and down through the stairs as well. And then it's just a small elevation showing the height of the bricks, the wall.
So kind of just coming back to it, this is that whole area that we were just talking about with all of those pieces. The next piece I want to talk about of program is this barn that's over here. This barn was built last year and was meant to be a storage unit. After living on the site for a few months, Robert realized it wasn't actually enough for all of the equipment that's being used to maintain the property and actually both properties now. It was tucked away into the trees sort of as much as possible. There is a desire to screen this some more, and I want to come back to that when I talk more about the landscaping. The proposal entails a conversion of this storage unit into an accessory dwelling unit for guests to stay in. It has been suggested, and we've looked into making it feel a little more like it fits within sort of this very historic district. There's some references down here of local stone used in some places that are probably very familiar to some of you. This is just a general photo in the area. I forget where it is. This is obviously, this is the dairy barns that were built also on the Ferncliff site originally. And this is the Rockefeller Stone Barns in Westchester. So what we're looking at with these is sort of just this sort of Norman-style brick buildings, sort of utilitarian buildings. In some cases, these types of buildings are very much out in the open. In some cases, these buildings are very much tucked away. Also, that's sort of a piece of the way that Ayler's sort of used to design outbuildings. There's a quote about Ayler's plan being, this is for Seen-Valese, "Plan being innovative for its placement of outbuildings." It says, "A stable is located in proximity, therefore convenient, but hidden in an interior wooded area. Other elements such as cottage and gatehouse replace this features." In this case, we want this to be an outbuilding that is not really very much seen, that is sort of kind of hidden into the trees and the woods. What's helpful about this drawing is you can obviously see where a lot of the existing trees are. Again, I'll get more into landscaping of that. So the proposal entails converting this into an accessory dwelling unit, refacing the house with a local field stone. This doesn't have as much color, this is a rendering, obviously, doesn't have as much color variation as we would hope to be able to find, which we're very much looking at with this in terms of the interest of color variation.
And it wouldn't be sanding so much by itself as part of the landscaping, there'd be a lot more trees surrounding it.
So that's this guy here. The next piece is this small accessory dwelling unit as well. This shed, this shed here is right here. So it's hard to see, anyone can come up and see if they want, but there's a dash line underneath this dark hatch that actually shows where this existing shed is. And this is this shed that I mentioned earlier that we think was built in the last 30 years just based on its construction. It's not listed as any sort of contributing building in the historic register. I have something, oh, right. Basically, yeah, based on its framing, which is built out of solid pressure-treated lumber, so we assume it's within the last 30 years. It is a new construction. There is the plan to take this down. The new accessory dwelling unit would contain one bedroom, one bathroom, and one kitchen. Its overall footprint is 17 feet by 17 feet, which is very small. It's basically enough space.
For upstairs, and then downstairs, it's a little tight, but a bathroom, sort of a kitchen, and just a sort of closet there.
The idea with this house, which is very much a contemporary design, is interesting to follow the last public hearing. It's very much treated as a folly in the same way that the Astors probably would have built sort of outbuildings in their time, in the sense that it's, you know, it's sort of, everything that they built was very modern, it was very of whatever was of the time. This building, very specifically, is even that much more tucked into what's already a very heavily wooded and sort of private sort of feeling area. It's obviously not visible from the public road. Our hope, and we haven't completely confirmed, is that it's also not really visible from either of the neighbors. The, and it doesn't really conflict with any of the remaining historic structures on the site in terms of its proximity to other buildings that are historic. This is basically, this small house is meant to be an escape, to blend in to the landscape and to sort of disappear. And it's really meant to, from the inside, have an uninterrupted sort of view and experience of this landscape. And again, being on the Hudson River in the same way that the last project, there's a sort of interest to sort of take that view. And this is a building that's in, I believe it's in Norway, but it's a sort of similar to the other ideas, is sort of echo of what we're looking to do here. So they're shown as inspiration, but sort of an uninterrupted view is what you would sort of have from the inside. And from the outside, it's kind of meant to just, you know, kind of disappear, really just go away and not be there. It's almost intended to reflect the environment that's around it so that that's all you really see is more of that sort of wooded environment. That's it on this guy. The last sort of piece of, or structure, or piece of architecture is what is meant to sort of replace the barn here. There, let's see. "This proposed accessory storage unit entails the construction of new detached accessory storage barn. It's meant to replace an existing single-story frame shed horse barn."
He's doing that.
So in terms of the footprint, they're very similar. We are, sorry, the barn will include only one bathroom, which will have a toilet and utility sink only, so it's very much just, it's a utility barn, it's for storage of equipment, storage of owners', you know, private possessions, things like this. The barn footprint and overall size are being studied. There have been some suggestions to look at the overall square footage necessary, as well as the overall height and sort of interruption into the landscape and the views and things like this. So we are looking at that. I do want to get back to the board on that at some point soon. So the exact sighting is also being looked at in terms of coordinating with the septic system, as it's a very difficult area to sort of work with for that. The location is sort of chosen, in these cases, the location were very much chosen to sort of, A, replace and not impact the landscape as much as possible, but also to sort of be hidden from view. This is just in a similar way to an existing barn. It's central to the site in terms of availability for, you know, getting equipment in and out and sort of maintaining the site. The finish of this barn was originally sort of meant to be the same as the other barn, but we're also suggesting this one be faced in the same sort of local stone, local field stone as well. The last sort of piece of the program is landscaping in general. I'm going to talk about both properties just because they're both, we can sort of split apart applications as we need to, but it is work that's on both of them, and some of it is tied in to both properties. In this case, I'm going to start from the beginning of the property.
There are two, there are two, there's one entrance to 195 River Road, which comes over here, and there's another entrance at Carmel Drive here. This is a shared road with the neighbor to the south. And I believe that, well, I know for a fact, this is the road being used as the main road for the property, I think out of reference and convenience, but also out of respect to the, to the sort of heavy use of this road, which I think is a little more stoned, so it's sturdy. So if there's more traffic, especially for the construction that will be happening, that's used on the side. But it's also a very idyllic driveway. There was, you know, it was the main interest for the Ferncliff estate. There is a gatehouse finished up here. There's other cops and, you know, the old greenhouses as well on another property, all from the Astors. So starting here in terms of the landscaping, he's interested in very much cleaning this portion of property up. There's a lot, these are a lot of photographs that were taken around them. There's a lot of fallen trees already, there's a lot of trees that are sort of dead that are still kind of around, and there's a lot of underbrushed that he wants to clean up and sort of, sort of clean up basically the b-shed of this, which I think affects the community in general in terms of the view from the road. And I think this was a very neglected property for a long time. There's a good amount of just cleaning up to do, and that's all he really wants to do. The comment is on the portion of the application that deals with the site currently is just the grassing of this, and that was done as part of the portion of the environmental impact site. So coming along this main road, there is this Ferncliff Drive comes through here as well. There is no reason for the nursing home to the south to use this road. It is a private road. So Robert would like to put a sort of a security gate here. It's not meant to be automatic, it's meant to be manual, so if there is emergencies or anything, or if there's some reason that somebody comes in and has an emergency to the nursing home, it could be operated by anybody at any time. It's mostly just a kind of way to keep traffic. A lot of people do enter Carmel Drive to come through to the nursing home, and the managers of the nursing home is here. So he'd like to kind of minimize that traffic, which I think will also help with some of the things that enter and do have access to this property. A second security gate, which would be automatic and private, but definitely would have a safety net built in basically for emergency vehicles. Repeat place here to bring the entrance to an old bridge, which was in one of the postcards over there. So we move in here, we have this cleaning up, we're adding two gates here, and these are the security gates. This is sort of, this is also part of the gatehouse and the entrance space as well. So again, we're not replicating the entrance gates for the back into the property, which I believe also is not for the both in the road, but just using that as a sort of, again, sort of interventions for these states. So as we move sort of further into the site, there's a good amount of screening that's being proposed for the site. These, it's kind of hard to see. The darker dots here are existing trees, trees that are over 12 inches in diameter. These smaller darker dots are proposed trees, and there's a mix of species within here. The idea is to screen this beautiful idyllic road from the nursing home, to screen from the nursing home.
There is also some proposed screening here and here. When we look to, I have another quote, sorry, I'm going to read. When we look to a couple of the older, again, the landscaping that was done by the Aylers originally, a quick little quote that says, "In the drive to the mansion, we went our way through a spacious archway of evergreens comprising the Norway spruce, the Austrian pine interspersed here and there with the graceful larch and the beautiful arbor of Vitae, and forming a fitting foreground to the left of the picture." The screening within this area is actually three out of those four species of evergreen. I think the problem nowadays is that there's a deer issue that they didn't have quite as badly in mid to late 1800s. So unfortunately, many of these trees have been sort of deer ravaged, and there is an interest to replace those trees with more deer-resistant evergreens. The new evergreens that are being installed, there is a change on one of the species that is not so deer-friendly, so we'll include that with all of our changes. And then the same thing within here. So with the screenings, the lighter dots were installed in the fall. There's only about six or eight that are being sort of installed here, and they're basically filling in some gaps between some really old locust trees and some existing screening here. The idea is to, a little bit twofold, I think, I think some of these trees were originally installed because headlights coming in were sort of, unfortunately, pointing directly at the neighbor's house. And so there was an interest to try to mitigate that. A sort of second part of that that we're doing here is to just slightly curve this road here so that there's not such a straight in and straight over. So it mitigates a little bit, it's not 100%, but also the screening is meant to help that as well. The screening in here basically is, the full goal of that is to hide this building completely from everyone, including Robert, who's really not that interested in seeing it from his own house. We originally had proposed to remove a portion of this road, but after some poignant comments, it was realized that this is an old carriage road and that actually shouldn't be touched. Functionally, he doesn't need to remove it, he just thought it was not serving any purpose because it used to connect onto the property when there were two properties, it used to connect right in through here. So it didn't seem to serve a functional need, but if this is historical value, by all means, there's no need to remove it if it's not broken. I think. In general, there's driveway maintenance proposed all throughout, there's a lot of potholes. There's some areas of sort of not quite asphalt, but hardscape that are sort of in disrepair that just need to be cleaned up. There are two septic locations being proposed. One septic field here that is to serve the new pool pavilion, the barn, and the guest house, the accessory dwelling unit over here. There is already an existing leach field and reserve for the main house, which is to its capacity, hence the proposal for a new septic system. There's also a septic system proposed in here, maybe originally just served for the sink and toilet in the barn. One last item, there is a sort of historic path that the Astors used to sort of make their way down to the riverfront. That's been, I wouldn't say restored, but it's kind of still intact. There is a culvert ditch that sort of stops that path right now, that's been sort of formed over the years. So there's a proposal to put in a blue stone sort of slab that will serve as a bridge between those two portions. There is, oh, there's a cove in here, so the railroad is here, and the Astro Cove fills in here. So this is the edge of the embankment basically, and then the cove fills in here. Along here? Oh, I don't know about that. I'd have to, is it, I'd have to, I don't know anything about it, I'd have to look into that. There is a bridge, as this path continues through, there's a bridge, but it's now on the next property. So the path does actually continue between the two properties in this case. And so there's actually two paths. There's this path, you know, this is the old carriage road, there's a path that sort of leads off that's a foot trail. There's also a path down in here, which I don't actually show as a path. Sort of, the hill is so steep, it's kind of hard to show.
Are we, are we sort of?
Those are the main points.
Sort of done?
I'm done.
Sort of done? Okay. A couple of procedural things we have to do. First of all, Joni, just assure that we have noticing and everything was all taken care of, and the county, I know, got back saying matter of local interest. Correct. Okay. The Conservation Advisory Board, any comments they wish to make at this point in time?
He's left.
He's left, so I guess that means no. Town historian, any comments you wish to make at this point?
Someone else may have more appropriate comments, but just run through the ones that I have. The teahouse design was inspired by the garden pavilion at Versailles. It was originally accompanied by a formal garden, as you pointed out. Many of the mansions at Newport also have teahouse structures as accessories for their estates. This teahouse was designed in 1948. David Pleville-Gourret was credited with it, but actually the blueprints are signed by Frenes and Taylor because they were actual architects, whereas he was only the designer. The building underwent the renovations in 2008, which pretty much obliterated the original And it contained 5,295 square feet now that it's been renovated. I understand that the estuacle has been taken off, and that certainly does increase the look of the house, appreciate that work having been done. The pavilion, which will face toward the south and Astor Court, will have a hexagonal design with the arched windows reminiscent of the original teahouse design. And I compliment you on that addition to the estate. Glass house that's proposed to replace the shed, I believe is to have a stone foundation. One of the renderings I had seen had poles.
Correct, correct, it's a glass, yeah, it's a stone foundation.
Stone foundation. I think that would be much better. And so I'm hoping that there will be enough screening around that. I'm a little confused as to how many accessory dwelling units and accessory, like this barn too, that has septic and just, at present time, just has a half bath. Are they intending to place a full, at one time I had heard that they were planning to have that, a caretaker's residence there.
Earlier on it was, and then we found in the code that were, without a variance, they said restricted to three or something, but I mean, it's more a site, so Robert would have to.
I see, okay. And then I also noted that the site plan calls for many changes in the estate road system. However, it's not desirable to obliterate the evidence of the original roads, and you've Care will have to be taken in assessing the detrimental effects of gates and fences. Not too clear on how that's going to all turn out. And the landscaping, as you mentioned, there is a deer problem, so that there has to be some effort to be able to protect the landscaping. There was some thing that I had seen that used a lot of ivy on the house, and the deer love that, so. And the location of the original mansion is slightly to the north of the.
We've dashed it in here from the best that we can guess, based on sort of the older plan that we showed earlier, as well as the aerial photograph in 1936. It shows it pretty tight here. There's always a lot of photographs that you can kind of get the sense how tight it was to the road. There's a lot of those postcards sort of reminiscent of this that we've taken. They actually show the back of the house.
So I don't know if any archaeology is planned, but.
An archaeology survey has been started as a phase one for all sort of areas of the city.
You're actually beyond phase one because they were excavating, correct? They were doing some test holes?
Yes, yes.
So that, phase one is just a literature search, so you've moved beyond phase one into phase two.
Okay, I might have misunderstood. My understanding was that this.
My understanding was that the shovel test that they were doing was phase one, if that's phase two.
It's phase two.
Yeah. They're definitely, they're definitely digging. If that's phase two, that's, that's fine.
Okay. The next thing I was asked for was the Town Waterfront Advisory Committee, but I understand they've left the building, so we'll just move right along to the succinct observations by the delegated planning board members who did the site visit.
Well, a lot, a lot of, a lot of the things that came up in our site visit have been talked about, but I'll just run through them. Obviously, we were talking to you about going back and looking at your plant choice material choices because clearly what's been happening there isn't, isn't working and isn't likely to work. So, you know, there's this balance between getting the screening in that you want with the appropriate plant material that's going to do it and then last. Because what's there, I would characterize it as mostly gone at this point. You know, it's been nibbled away so high that it's, it's not effectively doing anything for you or for the neighbors. We mentioned the archaeology and we appreciate you jumping right on that. It's a sensitive area and so, you know, we'll be waiting to hear what we get back from that, whether it's going to impact locations of things remains to be seen. I appreciate your talking about the road system and following up on that because the drives are an important part of that original landscape design and we want to see that protected. And I think we talked in the field about, you know, particularly the section between the teahouse and the Astro Courts. You know, I'm not particularly interested in seeing it continue to be paved or surfaced in any way, but I don't want the road bed removed so that it's always there as evidence. I think we've got some questions still that we need to resolve. We've got some follow-up questions about the setback distances in barn number two. I think it's sited on your plans too close to the property line, so we're going to have to go back and look at that. It's not a very wide area in there, so I think the sighting of that, we've got to look at a second time. And then the last thing that hasn't been mentioned that I think is going to be important going forward is the, is the mitigation plan that I don't believe is in place after the removal of the trees on the bank. And we did talk in the field there with the C A B about some work that's been accomplished. I don't think we feel it's enough work. I think we haven't talked about replanting of significant trees. I'm not sure that the shrubs that were put in there will last any longer than the other, than the other plant material that's in place. And, you know, we're concerned about that bank being stabilized. It's nice to have the view, but too much was lost in that removal and we really want to build into the plan a much more comprehensive mitigation plan for the, for this law. Art and Bob were there. Is there anything?
Yeah, I don't think we gave him a specific mitigation that we're exactly what we're looking for.
No, I think it's got to be worked out as part of this overall.
But I think the applicant has been, you know, open and been working diligently to be asking, you know, responding to what we've asked for. And I appreciate that.
But we weren't, I don't think we've been really clear. I mean, a lot of the things came up in other presentations, but not the slope mitigation part of what we want to see done. So that is one additional aspect that I think is important. Art?
I think you've wonderfully summarized the discussion in the field, and I believe that I brought up independently the slope stabilization issue at some point in time. There does need to be substantially more planting along that bank of substantially larger species and type material.
And I know another point that I think I conveyed to you, and I think it's going to be helpful, I think we've been sort of talking to that today, is that if you can show and possibly do as an overlay, the original landscape plan as best known, the original drives, the original carriage trails, things like that that the Astors had, and how you're integrating your new design into that historic landscape. Now, you keep speaking about trying to emphasize characteristics of the historic landscape, but the only way you can really do it is if you know what that was, at least what the topography was, how it was developed, and how your plans today are going to integrate into that. I think that'd be very helpful for us to see that. Other members of the planning board. Members of the public here to speak tonight.
Will you be continuing the public?
Yes, yes.
Because we haven't really had a chance to take a look at the.
Yes, and there's a lot more development yet to go. I guess there are a couple of things I would mention. All right. It's a type one action under seeker, which, and the planning board and the Z B A have to coordinate on that. The planning board will be doing the seeker review. At the Wednesday Z B A meeting, the plant, the Z B A did not accept the application for the one variance, the 1,500 square feet, and they're still awaiting the other two variance requests. So at the present time, there is nothing before the Z B A in terms of those three variances, and that has to occur. Clearly, the Z B A cannot act on variances as far as approval or disapproval until the planning board has completed the seeker process. And it seems there's still a good bit of information we require before we're going to be comfortable doing that. I know that we're waiting for our engineer to respond to the SWIP plan that was developed. I think there's a lot of landscaping issues that we really need to see. I mean, that's going to be very key to how this property is developed and actually preserving what you say you want to preserve. The only way to do it is to know what was there and how you're going to work with that and work into that. So I think that's a very important aspect of it also. The archaeology is key, and that's going to, I think, help you to develop an idea of what was there and how you're going to go forward. I think, given what we've found for plans for many other aspects of the Astro Estate, there may well be more detailed information about this particular part of the Astro Estate than perhaps you've been able to get a hold of at this point, which will also be very, very helpful, I think. That's about all I had to say to try and be succinct. I think the thing to do is to continue this public hearing and until.
The question is, when will the applicant have the additional information available?
I think we'll be able to accommodate the May 5th and have material to you in advance and make it available to the neighbor so that they can look at it. So I think we think that's sufficient.
How much in advance?
I'm sorry?
How much in advance?
How much, yeah, how much in advance do you think that's going to be possible to do?
I'd like to give you guys at least two weeks. Is that?
Yeah, we'd love to have two weeks, yeah.
That would be, that's, that's the typical submission requirement, two weeks.
That's what I understood it to be. So that's what we're aiming for.
And that kind of gives you guys two weeks. Okay.
A lot of this, as you can see, is sort of underway in terms of the few changes that are there. So based on comments we were waiting to submit so that there's.
Okay. And.
You don't anticipate having your archaeology report five days?
I think in two weeks, we, well, we're going to be close. I, we're going to be close.
It may or may not, but I think we'll have much more specific information on design details of the buildings, who are looking at changing the setback of barn two, height change. So I think we have a lot of historic information that Christopher has generated about the estate plan, who've been working on more details about.
That'd be very helpful.
So I think we will have significant additional information for you in two weeks. The archaeology depends really on what the interim results are.
Okay. And the other thing, get the applications to the Z B A. They meet every two weeks. I mean, theoretically, the planning board takes up an application if variances are needed, and the variances could be granted so that we can proceed with it. But right now, since there's nothing before the Z B A, it gets a little complicated.
And we don't want that to delay anything, but at the same time, we didn't want to unduly take the Z B A's time and as we're rebooking at some of the program here, that might impact.
And that's.
So, so we've got a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to mesh together, but we certainly care to, we want to move the processes.
And that brings up another, obviously, key issue. Are you, are you not going to consolidate the two properties?
Right. There's no application.
No, there isn't at this point, but I know that's one reason the Z B A wasn't comfortable going forward because the discussion at that night was that that was a possibility, and so they need to know also.
Right. Right. So that's on the critical half of the decision making.
Okay.
As you pointed out, while we're trying to solidify the program, respond to comments we've heard about the surface material of the buildings, the location, the height of the buildings, we also have a pending archaeology issue which could conceivably relocate.
Could shift some of this.
Yes, it could.
Could shift some. So, but, but in any event, I don't think we'd be wasting the board's time or the board's time if we said May 5th, because I think we will have significant additional information for you at that time.
That'd be very helpful, definitely. Anyone else on the board, anything I want to say right now, other than I want to go home?
They want to say adjourn, but they can't.
No.
You're halfway through the agenda.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
By the number of items, you're halfway through the agenda.
Anyway, before anyone gets really depressed, I'd like to hear a motion to continue this public hearing to May 5th at.
Seven o'clock.
Could I, could I ask three quick points?
Yes.
Some, just some clarifications, and maybe there are things that you need to get to us, but just want to understand how to move forward. The siding with the barn, is that something you'll get, the sort of, the second one that's 20 feet off right now? Is that something you'll get back to us on?
I will get to that tomorrow.
Okay. The mitigation plan, as a quick note, part of the mitigation plan included a survey by an engineer to sort of give the present state of the sort of hillside and what was going on. We've asked for a second report now that it's where we are, so I anticipate submitting that to you as well, which I hope will help to sort of give us a sense of, you know, you're saying there's a, there's a sense that there needs to be substantially more, and so I kind of need a sense of how to react to that in terms of what are we doing. So we'll get the report back, which I think will help, but then I suppose that's just a further discussion once we submit that report to you.
I would imagine that will be a further discussion. Exactly, yes.
Okay. And then the last item is, oh, that's nothing. Okay.
Oh. Okay. Is there any other public comment tonight? The meeting is going to be continued. Hearing none. Could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to May 5th at?
Call it seven.
Seven? Seven. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Thank you. Moving rapidly along. Next item.
Do business items and then go to resolutions.
We're going to go to resolutions after we do these. John Phillips, 2867 New York State Route 9G, special use permit and site plan, initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed detached accessory dwelling in the rural countryside RC 5 and water resource overlay district, planning board review and processing as may be timely under town code 125 zoning and seeker.
Accepted.
I don't know how many people, except for sort of, you know, the diagram of the land and septic system which we approved through the board of health by writing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep them at everything here.
You see a front page at the front of the house, second page is the side. Third page is probably 512385. That's the largest, almost 19 acres. My son has this house right here.
Accessory dwelling unit with three bedrooms? What? Accessory dwelling unit with three bedrooms?
And set up to go over 100 feet from that line to the.
I don't know that it gives any, any limitation on it.
I'm sure it's not, it wasn't.
He's saying, three bedrooms and an accessory dwelling? I didn't know that it had any limitation on it.
And the reason why I didn't want to subdivide, we all didn't want to subdivide it, is because I don't, we don't want anything touched in the back, because there's a beautiful swamp back there with weed swans and everything. It's a beautiful scenery. So if we subdivide it, then if something happens, my wife and I, oh, Barack and Michael, this way I'll stay as is. That's very important. So, that's it. And then the last two pages is Dave Ryder did the septic system, first test and everything. So we could have that all done. That's going to approve, just waiting for you all. So, and the house is over 100 feet from the line.
Yes, it meets the setbacks and all. Okay. Any questions? Art?
You're okay.
Okay? We're okay? I think we have a resolution. We'll just, you got it there. Okay.
And that's my wife's share.
Okay. We'll try to get you on earlier next time. Okay. The town of Rhondda Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer, hereby access follows in the matter of the March 17th, 2014, application by John Phillips under town code chapter 125 zoning for special use permit under the district schedule of use regulations in Article 5, Section 12545, and Article 6, Section 12568E, and related site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed construction for a 1352 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit on a single-family residential premise, 18.39 acre parcel on Route 9G in the rural countryside RC 5 district and water resource overlay district. All is depicted or otherwise described within a site plan and building plan prepared by, and we have that right here, we'll fill that in and date it. And short A E F Part 1, an agricultural data statement prepared by the applicant and subject to area variances to one authorize a detached accessory dwelling unit of 1352 square feet instead of the maximum 900 otherwise permitted, and two grant relief from the maximum permitted standard of a total of 1,500 square feet in accessory structures on a residential premises set forth within the Z B A's resolution of March 4th, March 5th, 2014, in the matter of case 851. One, waives the conduct of a separate sketch plan conference and accepts the applications as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's consultants, and the public. Classifies the proposed action as a type two action under seeker for which further environmental quality review is precluded. Schedules a combined public hearing as set forth within the annexed notice of public hearing on the applications for May 5th, 2014 at?
7:10.
7:10 P M. and directs the clerk to undertake under otherwise cause noticing and posting thereof in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577. Further directs the planning board clerk to circulate the agricultural data statement in a manner prescribed within New York's agriculture and markets law. Delegates planning board members, who wants to go?
I'll go.
Richard?
I'll go.
And Jesse. Okay. I'm going to write this down so I can read it this time. And Jesse, to conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing. Six, refers the applications to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment and consideration of environmental factors. Prefers the applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for U and advisory opinion pursuant to the general requirements of Section 239I and M of the General Misfulfill Law. Eight, requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice or requirement for careful consideration by the planning board. If any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above authorizes the planning consultant to prepare the working draft for consideration by the planning board when timely for of a co-additional approval, resolution, and incorporated findings. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. You're going to coordinate with Jesse and Richard on the site visit, and you're going to show up here on May 5th at 7:10 for your public hearing, which will probably be more like 9:20, but you know, 7:10 is when it's scheduled. And I think we're good to go. And I hope you enjoyed tonight's proceedings.
Very interesting.
You learn that you're going to come much later next time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, bring a takeout dinner.
I don't see Ruby Farmer.
Okay.
1652.
No, I don't either.
Unless, unless telling them about second round.
Well, let's see.
2016.
5018, 2016?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's see what we can do with this. Ruby Farmer, agent for John Nathan, 32 Kelly Street, special use permit and site plan. Initial presentation of applications for special use permit and site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the town's L W R A. Planning board review and processing as may be timely under town code chapter 125 zoning and seeker. Blah, 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 blah. What do we have here?
Well, this is a young woman we met with who's wanting to put the mudroom on the very small mudroom.
96 square foot mudroom attached to an existing residence in Rhine Cliff, and as Warren Smith would say, it's one of those cases that is subject to several reviews just because it's in Rhine Cliff.
Right. There really didn't seem to be any issues with it whatsoever when we went over it. And it's just, I, I think, you know, I'd like to go home and go to bed so I can really sympathize.
There's a, there's.
I have a resolution for you?
Does it block any views?
No.
All right.
Yeah.
[laughing]. And make it, make it 7:20 on that day, Michael.
Okay. Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board, upon review by the zoning enforcement officer hereby access follows in the matter of the, on the March 24, 2014, applications by Ruby Palmer as agent for John Nathan for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Section 12569 and 125, which one is that? Is that the overlay or is that the, within 1,000 feet or something?
Yes, it's within 1,000 feet.
Okay, I'll just put 1,000 there for now, and we'll get that. And related site plan review and approval in the matter of a proposed 96-foot, square foot addition to an existing single-family dwelling on, and I'll get the tax map parcel number, at 32 Kelly Street in the Rhine Cliff Hamlet and Rhine Cliff Overlay Districts, the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, and the town's LWRA, all as depicted and/or otherwise described within building plans by Brian Walker, architect dated March 23, 2014, and subject of a full EAF Part 1 and other required submissions. Waives the conduct of a separate sketch plan conference and accepts the applications as adequate for commencing review by the planning board, the board's consultants, and the public. Two, classifies the proposed action as a type 2 action under seeker for which further environmentally, environmental quality review is precluded. Three, schedules a public hearing as set forth within the annex notice of public hearing on the applications for Monday, May 5, 2014 at 7:20 PM, and directs the clerk to undertake and/or otherwise caused noticing and posting thereof in strict accordance with the provisions of Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Sections 12566 and 12577, delegates planning board members, who wants to go to Rhine Cliff? Okay, I'll go to Rhine Cliff. Who else wants to go to Rhine Cliff?
I'll go.
Woody, okay. We can get coffee and a bagel on the way. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observation at time of public hearing. Five, refers the applications to the Town Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment in consideration of environmental factors, refers the applications to the town's waterfront advisory committee for review and comment in consideration of the town coastal policies. Seven, refers the application to the town historian for review and comment.
All of which is required by the.
Refers the applications for special use permits and site plan review and approval to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to the requirements of Sections 239I and M of the general municipal law. Nine, requests further technical review of the applications by the town's planning consultant and without prejudice to requirement for careful consideration by the planning board of any input that arises through the continuing review process as set forth above, and authorizes the planning consultant to prepare a working draft for consideration by the planning board when timely in a conditional approval resolution with incorporated findings. Could I hear a resolution? A second. Anyone, anyone want to say anything else? All in favor? All righty. I don't know.
You do know.
I don't, I do? Oh.
You do.
What? Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. AT&amp;T Mobility, I'd like to get on to, that's, okay, okay, no, we're good here. Okay, this AT&amp;T Mobility thing, as, basically, as you know, there are now four pending applications for cell towers in the town of Ryenbeck. It is not unusual for an applicant to deal with someone in terms of, in this case, historic issues, things like that, to ask for comment. I think what we would probably want to do, and I've discussed this with Art, and I think he's absolutely right, is say, yeah, we're involved, we are concerned about the historic things, we're going to have comment. We don't have an application yet, so it would be premature, I think, for us to make any comment, anything, other than to tell them, yes, we are concerned, and yes, you'll be hearing from us. And we'll do it that way. So, we'll write something up and zip it off if that's okay with all y'all.
Zip away.
Okay. Charles Wiles and Ralph Catella, this is a time extension for conditions that we gave them, to meet the conditions we gave them before for that subdivision. Upon consideration of February 24, 2014, request for time extension submitted by Charles Wiles in the matter of the Charles Wiles-Ralph Catella minor subdivision lotline alteration in the Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board hereby extends for a period of 180 calendar days from March 15, 2014 to September 11, 2014, the deadline set forth within the planning board's resolution of September 16, 2014, wherein plat approval, subject to timely satisfaction of conditions and/or requirements, was granted. Was that, was that, was that a motion?
What, what is the condition that they're unable to?
Aye.
Among other things, consolidation deeds. There was a situation of annexation of parcels.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're swapping little couple.
Right. They need that, and they need a stamp by the Health Department on the drawing saying it's a non-jurisdictional and things of that sort, so.
Of no concern really whatsoever to the.
No, no big issues, yeah.
She was representing.
Well, she didn't want to sue me.
Maybe.
Oh, cool. Could I hear a motion, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. The resolutions you have before us are from the ZBA. They both referred, the first two refer to use variances. The second one, I think, I'm not sure, the ZBA dropped, took that up, the ZBA took that one. Why don't we start with the third one first? I think it's the easiest. Basically, Paul Baker, what he's asking for is he wants to build a garage on property which already has an accessory barn, an existing barn. It has three floors in it, although they're not necessarily usable, and he wants to take them out, but he hasn't done it yet. If he took them out, he wouldn't have to have this, the ZBA variance, because he would not have excessive, over 1,500 square feet with a garage. So, basically, it's sort of one of those things which gross square footage because of the floors has created the problem, it certainly has the footprint of the structures themselves. I was at the ZBA meeting, there was no objections, no one else had any concerns or anything like that. I must admit, I didn't see any problems with it either. I'll read you what Art has drafted here and see what y'all think. The Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board has reviewed the application for area variance submitted by Paul Baker, seeking authorization for increase in maximum permitted floor area of accessory structures from 1,500 square feet to 2,536 square feet initially and 2,056 square feet ultimately, so as to permit the maintenance and later modification of existing barn and construction of a new garage on a residential premise of 33 Cedar Heights Road in the RC-5 district. The initial is that he can't, isn't taking the floor out now, but he intends to take this floor out of this existing barn building, that's why you're seeing the roughly 500 square foot reduction ultimately. While the planning board notes the requested variance is certainly not de minimis, being initially a 69% increase and ultimately a 37% increase from the prescribed maximum standard, the planning board believes, one, the grant of the requested area variance and ensuing improvements will not create any significant planning or environmental issues. Two, should the area variance be granted by the ZBA, implementation of the two-stage proposal set forth by the applicant, which effectively reduces the extent of area variance, and a timeframe for its completion should be incorporated as a requirement of the ZBA's decision. And three, the ZBA should consider both this input and further rely upon its own further study of the facts in deciding the application in accordance with the criteria and procedures set forth in Town Code Chapter 125, Sections 125, 124C and D. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. The ZBA referral for Sophia Papakostantis. I'm not being able to see these very well anymore. This is the site that was the restaurant Diaspora, and then it was a sushi restaurant before that, those of us who remember way back when, the Longhorn Saloon, back then?
Oh, yeah. There's a stop on the way home.
What's the Rolling Rock before that?
It was like, you know, I remember, I remember there was a bachelor party there.
Never mind.
Never mind, but anyway. So, the fact of the matter is, this place has been a eatery of some sort since time immemorial, and whatever the word is. And they have done so much work on it to basically make it a restaurant, it would be very difficult, I can't, don't know what else you could really do with this structure out there. I'm not aware of any issues with it, well, maybe when it was the Longhorn Saloon, but certainly not since it was a restaurant, any problems that anyone had any objections or anything like that. I think they have, they pretty well have proved to the satisfaction of the ZBA that there was definitely a financial hardship here in terms of trying to sell it for any other use. So, this one, a use variance is not easy to get, but this is one of those cases where it had always been a restaurant, and it seems not inappropriate that it might be able to continue as one. This would just allow the use that they don't have anyone buying it yet with a specific restaurant in mind, but this would just allow someone to buy it as a restaurant, and then they would have to come before the planning board for special use permit and site plan.
Let's move on.
Okay. How about, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This last one is.
Is distinguished from the prior one.
Right.
The Papakostantis applications, inappropriate application for a use variance in that it deals with a request for a specific use that is permitted within zoning law, but not in that particular district.
Right.
This next application asks for authorization of commercial use, kind of generically asks for authorization of commercial use. That is not a use specifically defined in the, in the zoning law. An application for a use variance has to be to a specific use as authorized at some location within the community within the zoning law.
Take it back.
Right. And what currently is in there is a therapy, massage sort of type of a facility, and I guess they've done a lot of renovation, and they've been working it that way. My own view is that if they wanted the use variance to be asking for, it'd be for personal services not listed elsewhere. My suggestion would be to the planning board, that just as Art said, or as Jesse said, send it back saying, you know, we need a specific use, there's no such thing as commercial use. I mean, in terms of a.
Then it goes back to zoning.
It goes back to the ZBA.
Then it comes back to us.
Right.
Then it comes back to us.
Then it would come back to us again.
Yeah.
But that's, I don't think there's any way around that.
Is this the one case 859?
Yes. Would just be this.
Because over the years, it's had several.
It has.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Were you talking about this one right here?
Right, the zoning.
Yeah, this has always been a commercial use place, because I, I asked about that a long time ago, and it's, apparently, they've always had trouble with the town, too.
Yeah, well, they, what they did is they got approval to have a telephone service there, and then they just, when the telephone service moved out, they never came back, they had all sorts of different, an antique store, or this and a that, and they never came back to get approval.
But the town really dropped the ball by, they should have enforced it.
There's a whole, yeah.
Right.
I can, boy, the drop, we got a lot of dropped balls.
So, we should have, basically, they just need to specify.
I think they need to specify. They provided a lot of data to the ZBA, I think they may have the financial, the hardship thing down, but they need to have a specific use that they're asking for. So, we'll send that back to the ZBA?
Yep.
Okay. We now have Art. Hi there, Jonathan.
You have, you have, you have the Rosen, you have to act on, at this point, the Rosenbloom application, the Shrapko application, and the Grassmere application.
Giuliano.
Giuliano, we handled Giuliano.
Yeah, we did that one because we could, okay. We're going to go first to, we're going to go first to.
Page seven.
Page.
It's actually, the resolution is on.
Page eight.
Page 10.
Page 10?
Yes.
What are the new government reading, having to read all this?
Yes. What are the new government having to read all this?
You don't have to read.
I don't have to? Okay, guys?
You should read, you should, what you should read, let's, let's summarize this, Michael.
Okay.
The bottom line is, the Rosenbloom Suk Tankar applications are for, they're an application for certificate of demolition or removal, which was discussed by, by architect Smith during the public hearing, an application for special permits to deal with the, the work within the Rhine Cliff Overlay District, and an application for site plan review that's required in, in every case of an application for special permit. The resolution basically finds that the standards for grant of an application for certificate of, for certificate of demolition have been met, they were very well detailed in the architect's submission, and there's a finding here on the part of the planning board that the standards for development within the Rhine Cliff District and within 1,000 feet of the Hudson River are, are met.
Right.
And that essentially, subject to some ministerial conditions, like making sure that all fees have been paid, et cetera, the chair is authorized to stamp the site plan.
Could I hear a motion, could I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm not even going to ask for further discussion, because you wouldn't know what the hell you're talking about, because I don't either. So, I'll just poll the board. Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon, and I vote aye. Okay. And Shrapko. This is another one, you had a very detailed discussion, I think, three times before this board about what he's doing with the old schoolhouse there. I don't think there are any issues, I don't think there are any problems, I think, I don't think there was any, any word he said.
And this is, and this is simply, it's simply a, an approval of an application for site plan approval.
Exactly.
Triggered by the fact that any improvement within the landmarks district requires site plan approval by the, by the planning board.
Exactly.
There are no non-misterial, non-ministerial conditions attached to this, to this resolution.
Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
I will poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? No, no, wouldn't do that to you. Okay. All right now, we have one more thing to do.
This one, Michael, for the record, because of the importance of this, I would read the non-italicized portions of the draft resolution. The italicized portions are all excerpts from the finding statement that have been incorporated into this resolution, describing the project, describing the various permits and approvals that are required, et cetera. But the non-italicized portions are what should be read.
And this is the.
The annex document, the LWRPC, RP, consistency review paper doesn't need to be read either because it basically follows the finding statement, simply reorders the statement of, the statement of policies, 1 through 37 or whatever.
And we're covering it here anyway, issuing a statement of consistency under this resolution.
The resolution covers it.
This is just an annex document.
It's the annex document.
Okay.
And the only limitation within that statement of consistency is that, as pointed out in the finding statement, there'll be a revisiting by the planning board with the CAB of the detailed stormwater plan when it, when it comes into part of the site plan process.
Okay. All righty, now, let me see how fast I can get through this one. Whereas the resolution, this resolution by the Town of Ryenbeck Planning Board addresses the application by Grassmere Mench LLC applicant for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12520, District Schedule of Use Regulations, and Article 6, Special Use Permit Requirement, Section 12567, Special Standard, General Standards in Section 12568, Specific Standards for Certain Uses, Section MM Country M2, submitted on July 1, 2015, and amended on March 3, 2014, for a project known as the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Project for Development. The effect of the amendment was to both incorporate by the application the alternative site plan set forth by the applicant in response to comments received by the planning board during public and agency review of a draft generic EIS, and declared by the planning board to be the preferred or project alternative, preferred or project alternative in the final to be the preferred or project alternative, preferred or project alternative in the final generic EIS, and to more specifically depict the boundaries of the project site as set forth on drawing SK 2.0, as reviewed and found acceptable by the planning board during a subdivision sketch plan conference on February 18th, 2013. The, should that be 14? Did we do that?
Hmm?
About the, set forth in--
2014.
14, 2014, yeah, okay.
That's why, that's why you read resolutions.
Yeah, well, it's not like I ever see most of these things off. The application for special use for, for Country N2 is one of a substantial number of permits, approvals, and compliance determinations from the town planning board and other local, county, and state agencies which constitute the proposed action classified as a type 1 action under seeker, and being the subject of coordinating environmental quality review conducted by the town planning board in its role as duly designated lead agency under seeker. Prior to acceptance of the amended application for especially, for special use permit for authorization of the Country N2, the below-key milestones in the conduct of coordinated environmental review of the potential impacts of the proposed Grassmere Farm Hotel Development on natural and man-made resources have occurred. And I will list them. Preparation of a draft environmental impact statement by the applicant in accordance with the DG EIS scope issued by the planning board. Acceptance by the planning board of the DG EIS on October 23rd, 2013, as adequate for public and agency review based upon the DG EIS scope and the requirement in Article 8, the Environmental Conservation Law, and, and six, Art 1, Art 617 NYC double R. Issuance by the planning board of a notice of completion of DG EIS and conduct of DG EIS public hearing on November 18th, 2013, with provisions for continuing period preceded written comment through December 2nd, 2013. Review of the proposed development and recommendation by the town's waterfront advisory committee as to the consistency of the proposed development with coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP during the time period of the planning board's preparation of the final generic environmental impact statement. Issuance of a notice of completion of the FG EIS by the planning board on February 3rd, 2014, setting forth opportunity for public consideration and submission of written comments. Adoption of a finding statement by the planning board on March 3rd, 2014. The Grassmere Farm Hotel Development, as subject of the application for special use permit for Country N2, except in the matter of the number of lodging units which are limited to a maximum of 100 units under the present application without prejudice to the possible later application for the 10% density bonus, bonus density set forth within Town Code Chapter 125 is described in the following below verbatim except excerpt from the finding statement.
Skip the next five pages.
All right.
That's the verbatim excerpt describing the project.
I feel better already.
Page eight.
I feel better already. Upon accepting the amended application for special use permit for authorization of Country N2, the town planning board scheduled to require public hearing for April 7th, 2014, and provided for the noticing publication and posting thereof in accordance with Town Code Chapter 125, Section 12566, referred the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development in accordance with Section 239 of the General Municipal Law, and to the Town Conservation Advisory Board in accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, and circulated the required agricultural data statement in accordance with the New York State Ag and Markets Law. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, upon conduct of public hearing and with due consideration of input received at the public hearing and in response to the referrals made, hereby access follows in the matter of the July 1st, 2013, application by Mench Grassmere LLC applicant for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning, Article 3, Use Regulations, Section 12520, District Schedule of Use Regulations, and Article 6, Special Use Permit Requirements, Section 12567, General Standards, and Section 12568, Specific Standards for Certain Uses, subsection double M, Country N2, as submitted on July 1st, 2013, and amended on March 3rd, 2014, for a project known as the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Project or Development as explicitly described, as explicitly above described. One, in accordance with the requirements of Town Code Chapter 118, waterfront consistency review, that examination be conducted of the relationship of a proposed project to the coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP prior to acting on any required, requested permit, approval, or other compliance determination for a project in the LWRA. Issure the annex statement of consistency with coastal policies in the matter of the Grassmere Farm Hotel Development Country N2, and that's that other thing.
The 12-page chapter thing.
Two, deems the proposed Country N2 as explicitly described above to be consistent with the general standards for all special use permit uses set forth within Article